Well, good afternoon, everybody. You are tuning in, if you're watching this later, to our Tuesday Philippians Bible Study. So I want to welcome everybody that's watching this later and those who are joining us now. So next Tuesday, we're studying Philippians at 12:30. So hop on during your lunch break if you can, or just continue keeping up with us as we study this book for the next couple more weeks. So today, we're looking at Philippians 2:12 through 30. Philippians 2:12 through 30, so we'll be wrapping up chapter two. And just looking at that, so I'll give you some time to turn there. So today, I'm sporting my Atlanta Braves baseball hat. For those of you that are not baseball fans, this is not an Alabama Crimson Tide hat. This is the Atlanta Braves. So just want to clarify that no one could seem to differentiate the two. I would never wear a Alabama, University of Alabama hat, but this is a Braves hat. Right now, there's no baseball on TV or in person. Hopefully soon, they're talking about it. If you've, if you know me, you know I'm a big baseball fan. I love the sports. I love watching it. I love all the intricacies of it and the stats and every bit of baseball. I'm a big fan of and all that it goes into. In my family, we play baseball, baseball in the front yard all throughout the week. So right now, they're talking about reopening and hopefully starting baseball in July. And they cut off the season right in the middle of spring training. And if you don't, not familiar, just bear with me, okay? Spring training is just this time period where the players get in shape, they get adjusted, they make sure their swings are in alignments, they get, they work out their arms, especially the pitchers, since their arms have been resting, it takes a lot of time to build up stamina and strength in your pitching arm. So they're preparing for the dog days of summer and the long season that's ahead of them. 162 glorious games of baseball. And they use spring training to prepare and to work hard for the time that's coming up in hopes of winning a championship at the end of the year. Now, it's been 25 years since the Braves have been able to do that, and it may be another 25, I hope not, but I'll still, I'll still root for them because I know and appreciate the hard work that goes into being a professional baseball player. So today, we're looking at the work that goes into following Jesus, all right? Now, I want to clarify before we get into our passage that our salvation in Jesus Christ is not tied to anything that we do or anything that we have done, all right? It is not a works-based salvation. It is not contingent to Jesus. God doesn't say, "I will save you, but you have to do this." The only thing that we bring to the table in salvation is our sinfulness and how wicked that we are and desperately need Jesus. So Jesus has done all the work for us, all right? That is the message of the gospel. And the definition of the gospel that we've been using in this study is, it's the good news that Jesus Christ came to this earth, lived a perfect life, died for sinners, rose again three days later conquering sin and death. And now there is salvation for all who believe in Him and repent of their sins, giving us a new and eternal life. So this is the gospel work. It is not our work, but it is a work that's done in us. But as we are Christians now, and we have been saved, there is a work that goes into following Jesus, and Paul's going to address that today, all right? In Philippians 2:12 through 30. So let me just recap what we've talked about and then jump into the study, okay? The first week, we learned that our salvation, it begins with Jesus. Our Christian maturity is completed by Christ, and it is a joyful occurrence. And then we kept looking and seeing that Jesus is going to complete this, you know, in the future. He began it, he's going to complete it. Last week, we talked about the unity that we have as believers, that we are to be united together, and that that is a joyful event that takes place between us and other brothers and sisters in Christ. And it's modeled after the humility that Jesus showed on the cross. So we looked at that last week about really the glorious nature of all that Christ has done for us on the cross and through His resurrection. So today, Paul is going to encourage us to work out our salvation by the power of God's grace, and we're going to talk through that today. So let's read Philippians 2, verses 12 through 17, all right? It says, "Therefore, my beloved, as you have always obeyed, so now, not only as in my presence, but much more in my absence, work out your own salvation with fear and trembling; for it is God who works in you both to will and to work for His good pleasure. Do all things without grumbling or disputing, that you may be blameless and innocent children of God, without blemish in the midst of a crooked and twisted generation among whom you shine as lights in the world, holding fast to the word of life, so that in the day of Christ I may be proud that I did not run in vain or labor in vain. Even if I am to be poured out as a drink offering upon the sacrificial offering of your faith, I am glad and rejoiced with you all. Likewise, you also should be glad and rejoiced with me." So you see two instances of rejoice there in verse 17 and 18, so circle those. You just see Paul's just rejoicing in what God is doing in the lives of this church. One of my passions as the pastor of Grace Life Church is to help people grow in their faith, right? To make disciples. I want to see people who are lost in their sins become Christians and then grow into Christian maturity while they make disciples. And this is what Paul's getting to here, right? This is the work of a follower of Jesus, all right? So we're going to really look at verse 12 and 13 today. "Work out your own salvation with fear and trembling; for it is God who works in you both to will and to work for His good pleasure." All right, so the first thing we're going to see and look at is work out your own salvation. Now, a lot of us probably aren't, I think you're falling into two camps right now during the quarantine. You're either working out more than you did before, or you're working out less than you did before, all right? And maybe even under the same household, you have someone that's working out a lot and someone that's just doing the heavy lifting of fork to mouth or Oreo to mouth, right? I won't tell you which one of that is in my family, but I have enjoyed lots of snacks this quarantine season, okay? So this idea of working out, it's, it's, it's an encouragement to just, to lean into and to put some effort into this, all right? And we're going to flesh that out and see what that looks like here today. So what Paul is saying is, "You've heard me call you to humbly count others more important than yourselves, to look out for the interest of others," all right? So therefore, as we see in verse 12, all right? Therefore, because you've heard me call you to humbly, to humility, you have just heard me describe the example of the one who loved this out, lived this out in humiliation and the divine approval in his exaltation. Now, I'm going to give you more explicit directives as to how you must live. "Work out your own salvation with fear and trembling; for it is God who works in you both to will and to work for His good pleasure." Paul is telling this church that he is not content, and neither should we be content, of where we are in our relationship with Christ, all right? As we are living on this earth, we don't reach the top of the mountain, say, "We have arrived, I am as close to Christ as I possibly can get on this earth." That's not how it's going to work here on this during our lives. We're going to keep growing and growing into Christian maturity. We're not trying to reach a level, right? We're pursuing Christ-likeness. And we know that Christ-likeness is perfection without sin, which is not going to be able to be obtained here on this earth, all right, because of sin. But on the other side of this life, when we are in the presence of Jesus, that He who began a good work is going to complete it, right? He's going to make us perfect and no longer dealing with sin. But until then, we just don't sit back and say, "All right, I'll wait, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna work out." It wouldn't make any sense for any professional athlete to say, "All right, the season's coming, I'll just wait to put on all the effort at the championship round in the World Series," right? Because you get there, and then you're going to wish that you had worked harder, all right, and take advantage of that time to prepare for that big event. So Paul is going to encourage them to work, to work out their salvation with fear and trembling. And what he's referring to is not the self, the position of who we are in Christ, but our practice, okay? And here's a big theological word, sanctification, sanctifications, sanctified sanctification, okay? There's two parts of sanctification in the life of the believer. You have the sanctification that we have when we become Christians, where Christ saves us and we are positionally in Christ. That cannot be changed. You, if you believed in the name of Jesus and your sins have been forgiven, you, your position is solidified in Christ, okay? Now, there's not only the positional sanctification, but there's the practical sanctification, which is the daily living out of our relationship with Christ. And that's where we see this growth and Christian maturity in working towards Christ-likeness, okay? So let me define what sanctification is, okay? And this is from Wayne Grudem, it is systematic theology. So if you are in our Ladies Systematic Biblical Theology Workshop for Women, then this is the book you're using, this is the definition he uses. He says sanctification is a progressive, that's a key word, okay, a key word, okay? It's a, it's a movement of hopefully more and more like Christ, all right? It's a progressive work of God and man that makes us more and more free from sins and like Christ in our actual lives, all right? So there's movement towards Christ, all right? Here, now let me ask you this question, okay? How many of you have been growing in your Christian walk, but you hit a season where you feel like you're taking steps backwards? Anybody been there? I know, I know I have. I think everyone that's been a believer has been through that season, all right? Where you're, you're growing, you start off, and you're, you're growing, you're growing, but then something happens, something distracts you, takes your eyes off of Jesus, and then it takes a couple of weeks, days, hours, minutes, where Holy Spirit just draws you back to Jesus, there's repentance, confession, and continual growth towards Christ, all right? So there, it's still a progressive, just movement towards Christ, all right? Because even in those seasons where we are in sin and the Holy Spirit's working in us, hopefully the next time we hit that season, we've learned from that, right? We're like, "Okay, I need to recognize when I, my heart is not looking and attentive on Jesus." So here's the most helpful illustration I've heard to define, to help us think through this idea of progressive sanctification, right? It's like you're climbing a set of stairs with a yo-yo, right? So if you have a yo-yo and you're climbing up a stair, so there's sometimes that yo-yo is up, sometimes that yo-yo is down. And that is kind of like we, like us, we are like that yo-yo. Sometimes we're going up with the stairs and sometimes we're down. And if we're not careful, we will continue to gauge our success based on where we are as in that moment. So some, like right now, a lot of us are struggling with just life in general, and we, we use this to continue working out our sanctification in Christ Jesus to say, "Okay, let me learn from this, let me grow, let me let this strengthen me." That way, the next time I'm faced with a scenario or temptation, or I fall into sin, I could just, I could turn to the Holy Spirit and rely on His work, okay? But to really help us understand what sanctification is, we're going to look at another theological word that helps us see, it helps us see how God sees us. That word is justification, okay? So justification, using Wayne Grudem's definition again, is an instantaneous legal act of God in which He, God, thinks of our sins as forgiven and Christ's righteousness as belonging to us and declares us to be righteous in His sight, okay? So this is who we are in Christ. This is our standing in Christ, that we are righteous, that when God sees us, we are His child, we are His, we are righteous, we are, it's a legal standing that we have been declared through the work of Jesus Christ righteous, okay? So we can't have sanctification without justification. Where justification is a legal standing, sanctification is an internal condition. Where justification is once for all time, sanctification is continuous throughout life. So where justification is entirely God's Word, sanctification is a cooperative effort between us and God. And where justification is the same in all Christians, sanctification looks different from person to person. People are going to grow in their faith in Jesus differently than even spouses, right? It's the Holy Spirit's work in us as we work alongside of Christ, grounded on what He has done for us in our justification. So when Paul says, "Work out your own salvation," he's not saying, again, "Work for your salvation." That's already been accomplished through Jesus Christ. He's calling us to work alongside of the Holy Spirit to grow into Christ-likeness. And as we live this life of ups and downs of the Christian life in different seasons, we continue to look and strive to be like Jesus Christ. So work out your salvation. So here's our work, all right? So this is a tag-team effort, trying to accomplish this together, okay? Our work, the responsibilities of Christian obedience, it's not a casual matter, but a lot of times, we just don't put a lot of effort into obeying what God's Word says for us, okay? So why do we think, why do we, all right, if you want to chime in here or just comment in the chat section, why do we think we, or why do we struggle with obeying the commands of Christ found in His Word? Why do you think we struggle with it?
Jim said that it's hard.
Because it's hard. Yeah. It is hard. Especially if we try to do it on our own.
I was just going to add that to it because so many times, we try to do it our way because we're not really sure, you know, His way. Because, you know, even though you have so many examples in the Bible and stuff, is that, just like we were talking earlier, you know, I struggle with what to say to people, you know, without sounding like I'm a Jesus freak.
Right.
Jim says he feels like Jonah.
Typing the question here in the chats. Yeah, I think, I, I think a lot of us, we get frustrated by our lack of obedience, and maybe we tend to put our, our identity in our disobedience, where we say, "Well, I'm just, I'm just going to keep messing up. Why would God love me? I can't, I can't get my act together." And we just, it's this, maybe the cycle that we just keep falling into, and maybe it's because we think that way because we rest entirely on our own work, where we're like, "Okay, I, I, I got this, I can do this, I can defeat this on my own, but we can't." So one comment in the chats, I think it can be boiled down to selfishness. We put ourselves and our simple desires ahead of God. That's very true. That's very true. And I think that's something in a lot of conversations that I've had in the last seven weeks since we've been kind of quarantined and everything's been shut down. A lot of things that we truly love and desire have been brought to light, right? Like if you have a, if your hopes are in sports, now's not a good time, right? Like you, you're just missing it. And this is something I continue to learn, right? Like I've gone a lot longer without baseball, and it's been okay. I, I, I don't need it in my life. It's a, it's a fun hobby, but I don't need it. I can, I can live without it. There's other things that we're, you know, we're learning and, and really that's being fleshed out. So yeah, so I think there's a wide variety of reasons why we struggle obeying the commands of the Bible, whether we want to do it ourselves, whether we think we just can't do it, and we, maybe we give up because we, we think like Jonah, or maybe we think it's, we think it's too hard, we're like, "Ooh, I can't handle that." There's a wide variety of reasons why we struggle with it. And I think maybe some of it comes down to how much attention and energy we put into it as well. So going back to the baseball illustration, we're going to kind of stick with that throughout today's study, all right? So when it comes to hitting, there's a lot of different batting stances, all right? Some people hold, hold their bats here, some people hold them higher, some people even hold, hold them lower, all right? So it's, it's not necessarily in the stance that you're looking, looking for, right? Some things come naturally. I'm going to hold mine up here, Colton holds his a little lower, right? And he's going to adjust, but it's, it's getting your hands in your hips into the right pathway to hit the ball correctly, okay? Lots of nerdy baseball language going on here, right? So everybody is going to hopefully end up in the same movement in order to hit the ball, but a baseball player will go through a slump, and they have to spend extra time in the batting cages to fine-tune their swing and to get it back into normal. And if they do not put the work in, they're not going to play, and they're going to end up getting cut or not making the team or having to retire if they don't want to put the work in. The same kind of goes for us. When we see that we're in a slump, when we're seeing that, "All right, we need to just continue to grow in this area, let me put the work in, let me put the effort and attention into my Christian faith like I would my work, or like I would my hobby, or in my home, or with my family," right? If something is important to us, we want to put a lot of time and energy into it. And I think that's part of what Paul's saying here is work out. This is, it's hard work, it's strenuous, it's going to stretch you at times, and it's going to maybe even make you bleed a little bit. But hard work is good work because it makes us more like Jesus Christ. So that phrase, "work out," it's going to refer to our responsibility to actively pursue obedience, continuing to obey. There's not a part of the Christian life where we get to stop obeying. We continue to obey. So this is what Christian obedience looks like for us, all right? When God gives us a command from His Word, we're going to get to that into, in a little bit, the end of this, we, we do it. Sometimes we ask why we do it, and God's Word explains to us that, and as we've looked in John 10 the last couple of weeks, that Jesus has come to give us the abundant life, meaning His dos and His do-nots are for our own good. He knows what's best for us, so when He says, "Do this," He knows it's going to bring joy and satisfaction. When He says, "Do not do this," He knows that it's doing that thing will not bring joy and satisfaction. He's also given us the Holy Spirit to convict us and, and give, given us our own personal convictions of things that are not going to be good for us and things that will be good for us. So He's, He's calling us to just obey what He has called us to do, and Jesus expects obedience from His followers. So if you're not watching on Sundays, if you're watching this and you're not a part of our church or whatever, we've been looking at John 10, and Jesus is saying, "I'm the good shepherd." So a sheep hears, Jesus says, "The sheep hear my voice and they follow me." So they hear what Jesus says, and they instantly obey and they follow. And they don't just hesitate, they, they know, "This is where I need to go, I need to go this way," all right? So if the sheep is disobeying, the shepherd gets involved and says, "Hey, this is where we need to go. I'm taking you right to exactly where you need to be." So he's expecting obedience from his disciples. And this is why, so why, a question we asked just a minute ago, why do we struggle in this area of obedience? Why is it sometimes we follow through and say, "Yes, God, I'll do it, I'll obey, I'll put off my sin and put on holiness," and then other days, we're like, "Nah, I'm not going to do it." We'll see that temptation, and it just, we instantly reach out and grab it with it, maybe without even a second thought until that conviction comes afterwards, right? There's this tug of war in the Christian life. Why do we struggle? And I think Paul gets down to it when he says in verse 12, "To work out your own salvation with what? Fear and trembling." This is how we work it out. It's, other translations will say, "With awe and reverence." See, we, our obedience has to start with God and seeing how great He is, how good He is, and how faithful He is. Jesus says, "I am the good shepherd," right? "The sheep hear my voice and they follow me." They, their following is a response to the goodness of the shepherd. That was this past Sunday's sermon, right? Their, their following is response to the goodness of the shepherd. They're not following the shepherd if the shepherd's not doing a good job. If he's going to lead them right into danger, they're going to be like backing out, but they follow as a response to who He is. And we follow and we obey God because, out of a response to His awesomeness and who He is and His holy character. "To work out your salvation with fear and trembling." I think maybe some of the times we get frustrated in our walk is because we don't see the wonderful nature of who God is, that He does this for our good and for His glory, as John Piper says, okay? So a lack of desire to obey God's commands and to pursue holiness is often connected to our lack of passion and awe for who God is and what He has done in our lives. Maybe the fear and trembling in that verse reveals our own desires. That's why we have to put in, part of that work is saying, "Okay, do I see God for who He really is? Do I see Him for being holy and righteous and wonderful? Or do I see Him as something different? Do, does my view of God line up with what the Bible says about God?" And as we learn who God is, we can then say and find it easier, I believe, to obey Him because we see how good He is. One of the most impactful books I've ever read, if you've never read it, it's called The Holiness of God by R.C. Sproul. Read it a couple of years ago. I'm actually getting ready to reread it here in a little while, and it's all about the holiness of God and our response to that, and how maybe we as Christians don't see just how disgusting and depraved our sins are in the presence of a holy God, right? It is the, the contrasting of night and day, right? When they're, they're, that, that's the picture that we have to see. But in the book, he mentions that the only characteristic and attribute of God, mentioned three times in the Bible, in a row, all right, consecutive times, is His holiness. So we see holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty. We see it in Isaiah and Revelation, a couple of different other parts of the Bible, holy, holy, holy. We never see love, 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 or gracious, 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 or whatever attribute of God we want to fill in the blanks there, right? It's holy, holy, holy. It's this, "Look at the holiness of God and let that drive everything about us," because when we see God's holy holiness, His goodness, it will lead us as Christians, as His followers, to faithfully obey what He's called us to do because First Peter, he says, "Be holy, because I am holy." So start, part of working out our own salvation with fear and trembling is starting with the foundation of who God is and how we relate to Him and seeing how wonderful He is. So start there. In your work is maybe asking God in prayer, "God, help me to see You for who You are. Help me to long for You. Help me to give You a desire for You." Again, going back to the baseball, you know, I, I mentioned earlier before this, the Bible study started, we pressed record, like, "I wish we could have baseball back." Yeah, and, and it, and it's times like this where I have to stop, like, alright, do I want baseball back more than I want God? And just asking those hard questions? And thinking through that, Psalm 62:1, "As a deer longs for streams of water, so I long for you." Isaiah 26:9, "My soul yearns for you in the night. My spirit within me earnestly seeks you for when your judgments are in the earth, that happens at the world. Learn righteousness." So maybe God's using this season in our life to teach us to seek Him and who He is. That way, we can grow in our sanctification. Does that make sense? Like what? How seeing God and who He is really drives our obedience to Him? Do y'all see the connection there? I'm gonna take your, I'm gonna say hopefully, okay, thumbs up are good, thumbs up are good. Sometimes the nod, the, the head nod, it, it, you, you start the nod, but it doesn't go up high because the, the way the internet is and you buffer in it. Like, I'm not sure if that was a head nod or just the internet buffering, we're not sure. But plus it's lunchtime and you've already had lunch, maybe you're napping, I don't know. But then, so we got our work where we are putting our work into it as well. Then we get God's work where He is just working in us. Again, it's, He's working alongside of us based on what He's done for us in the gospel. And verse 13 says, "For it is God who works in you," okay? Let's not forget this. Let's not try to do this on our own. This is not a, hey, pick yourself up by the boots, bootstraps type of thing here. It's a, "God is here with you. Work with Him. He is working in you both to will and to work for His good pleasure." Here's what's really cool about our own effort into growing in Christ-likeness, okay? He works in you to will. Even the desire, even the, "I want to grow in my faith", comes from God's work in us. That is the Holy Spirit drawing us to God. It is He who works in you to give you the want to grow in Christ-likeness, alright? God's power makes us willing to live godly lives. And He works in you to will, and He works in you to do the work. Colossians 1:29, "For this I toil, struggling with all His energy that He powerfully works within me." So let's not lose sight that as we are growing in Christ-likeness, that it is God who is working in us to, to give us those desires for Him and to give us the strength to carry out that work, alright? So how do we work out our own salvation, alright? Actually, let me read 1 Corinthians 15:10. "By the grace of God, I am what I am, and His grace towards me was not in vain. On the contrary, I worked harder than any of them, though it was not I, but the grace of God that is with me." So Paul is going back to his salvation, alright, 1 Corinthians 15:10, showing how he put all this work into his salvation. But it's not that, it's the grace of God that works in, that a grace of God that is with me, alright? And he continues that transformational work. So it's not like God says, okay, "I saved you, I did the work here, you are on your own, figure it out." It would be like a parent who has said to their kid who cannot, cannot swim, "Hey, jump in, I'm gonna catch you and you'll be safe." Alright? That kid jumps in, parents catches them, fulfills that word and says, "You're safe", and then throws them and says, "Now figure out how to swim. You're on your own, right?" Know that parent is there helping them learn that as well. You're in the pool, you're in the presence of God, you're swimming. Now the, now the parent, now God is going to help us grow in our faith. So how to work out your own salvation? The final few verses of this paragraph shows us how to work it out. One, don't be a complainer. I, I love how Paul just says, "Okay, do all things without grumbling or disputing." Don't complain. See the, the situation you're in, and maybe it's difficult and hard, but trust in God and turn to Him. Don't complain about what's going on. And it's easy to complain and grumble about everything that's going on because Christian perseverance is difficult. Pursuing holiness and practicing hospitality and, and loving our families and kids and serving joyfully and other facets of it, there's parts of it that may lead us to grumbling and complaining. So part of growing is realizing, hey, I'm going to be content in all that I have. Not going to grumble and complain. Going to think through that, okay? Secondly, is be lights in the world. Verse 15, "Do all things without grumbling or disputing, disputing that you may be blameless and innocent children of God without blemish in the midst of a crooked and twisted generation, among whom you shine as lights in the world." Alright, so part of our grumbling and disputing, if we're doing that, then the people in the world see that we're grumbling and disputing, when really, as Christians, we really have no reason to grumble or complain because God is so gracious to us. And then Paul says, "Hey, we are lights to the world." So part of growing in Christ-likeness is realizing that there are people in the world who need Jesus. And asking the question, alright, when, when people look at me, do they see the hope that is in Jesus? And, and being aware of your testimony of Christ to the people a- around you, okay? With what you say, with what you watch, with what you even post on social media and how you act. And, and, yeah, we're not gonna be perfect by any means. But even confession and forgiveness and repentance is an evidence of gospel work in us when we ask someone that's not a believer for forgiveness, because people don't really do that anymore. So be lights in the world. Here's the thing about a candle in the dark. It may be small, but it stands out and it makes a big difference. If it's dark and you just have a little match, it's going to show the light in that dark room. So be that little candle wherever you are. Most of us aren't going to be big, bright, shining lights everywhere, right? But let's reflect the, the light of Jesus to the people around us. Let's be an influence with the gospel. And then finally, not only are we to do things without grumbling and complaining and disputing, fighting for unity, not only will we be to be lights in this dark world, but we are to hold fast to the Word of Life. Now, as we read that in verse 16, "Holding fast to the Word of Life, so that in the day of Christ I may be proud that I did not run in vain or labor in vain." There's two applications that we can make here, okay? One is hold fast to God's Word. What God's Word says is true. Hold fast to it. Lean into it. Trust it. Practice it. Put it into work. When God says, "Be generous, be gener- generous", when He says to, "Don't lust, then don't lust", like, trust that God has given us His sufficient Word, alright, for today. And then not only hold fast to God's Word in the Bible, but hold fast to the Word of Life, as John 1 says, "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God." That word is Jesus. To hold on, to hold fast to Jesus, and all that He says, He is in His Word. So let me bring this full circle and close it out, okay? Joy, as, as we've defined in, in our series, and what we're talking about here. "Christian joy is a good feeling in the soul produced by the Holy Spirit as He causes us to see the beauty of Christ in the Word and in the world." When we grow in Christ-likeness and we continue to pursue holiness and we grow in Christian maturity, that is going to produce a joy in us. The Holy Spirit's gonna produce that joy in us to see that being like Christ is far greater than being like the world. And the more we grow, the more we realize that the things of this world we just don't need. We just don't need. So going back to the baseball illustration one more time. When you put in all the work on your team from spring training, from like February all the way into October, alright? And for some reason, we don't play baseball in November, December, and January. Maybe they'll fix that one day, I don't know, but and you win a championship and you look back, you're gonna say, "All the hard work I put into in February was worth it." All the, the hard parts and hard seasons of this was worth it because we've achieved what we were after. And as Christians, we know that what we are pursuing is Jesus. When we've obtained Jesus, and, and we have, and we will see Jesus and be with Jesus for all eternity, we will look back and say, "It is worth it." It is worth it. So my encouragement to you is keep growing. Forsake your sin, get into the Bible, fi- find a, a community of believers and a discipleship group or life group, and just grow in your faith and seek the help of the Holy Spirit along this journey as well. Alright? Any final questions before we stop the recording today? Head nods? Alright, well, thanks for watching and join us next Tuesday for the, the next part of this Philippians study.